We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at seven o'clock for the members present.
Wilson.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
Babcock.
Here.
Morris.
Here. Item number two is discussion with possible vote to approve, disapprove, or take no action to purchase new lockers for the locker room.
I have a Jurgensen locker. They are out of Salt Lake City, Utah. We talked about thirty lockers, fifteen in each of the boys locker rooms. As you remember, they were destroyed by a leak this summer. We're getting them for $282 apiece. And to assemble each one of them is $25, which is pretty cheap to get them assembled, saves, probably, a lot of time. And the freight's $1,100 for a total of $10,330. And I recommend approval. We've shopped quite a bit, and that's about as good price as you're gonna get on it.
Are these metal lockers?
These are metal lockers. So if we have another leak, we can power wash them off, bleach them, and use them.
Be back in business.
Yes. I would recommend approval.
I recommend we approve. One second. Vote.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Yes. Item number three is board vote to approve, disapprove, or take no action to enter into executive session to discuss the following items. A, interview prospective individuals to fill a vacant board seat. I will make the motion to go into executive. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order at 7:51. Vote. I'll make a motion that we call the meeting back to order at 7:52. I apologize.
I'll plug it.
Vote.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item number four is executive session compliance announcements. The only thing discussed was possible interview or interview of vacant board seats. No votes taken.
Those present. Those present.
Oh, those present were Shane Wilson, Don Simmons, Dr. Babcock, Shane Morris, Russell Reed, and Mr. Jurgensen. Okay. Okay, item number five, discussion and possible vote to approve, disapprove, or take no action to appoint and swear in board member to vacant seat.
First of all, you have to have a recommendation.
Well, I make the motion that we appoint Russell Reed to the vacant board seat. Is there a second?
One second.
Vote, my vote called.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Reed, if you'd like to join us. Please read this. This is a swear in to Freedom Board of Education.
I, Russell Reed, hereby declare under oath that I will faithfully perform the duties of Freedom Board of Education, of Freedom Public School, to the best of my ability. And I will faithfully discharge all duties to say office and obey the conservative laws of the United States of Oklahoma.
Here, sign it. Date it just up here. And then just date it. Today's the twenty-ninth. You're good to go. Okay, congratulations. Okay, item number six then is board to hear, discuss, and vote on appeal of Craig Hamel's ban from coming on school property and attending school events. The way this hearing's gonna work is Mrs. Burgess is gonna give her recommendation or her reason why it was done, and then Craig will have a chance to rebut that. And this isn't a character hearing, anything. This is just about the instance why this was done. And whenever we get done, the decision of the board is final. So with that.
Thank you. I received this information from our, from Bryant Weber, our ag teacher. On Saturday, September tenth through 2016, Freedom FFA was at the Woods County Fair at a livestock judging event for Woods County FFA and 4H. At the beginning of the livestock judging, Mr. Nation, the agriculture education instructor, asked us if other ag teachers, Freedom and Winoka, would have a problem judging each class. And after each class, had the ag teacher people helping, the livestock judging contest would discuss with our own community of students how or why we replaced the class. The Freedom Ag Teacher Bryant Weber and the Winoka Ag Teacher Will Anderson said no, they had no problem with doing this. Alvin Winoka had their ag instructors, along with others, discussing how we replaced them at one. On the class of swine one, Bryant Weber started out by asking how would you place this class of swine. The students said they're placing. However, when one student said her placing on the class, Mr. Craig Hamel said, "Are you effing kidding me? Name a student." He started going on. I said that was enough, and he stopped. However, by the time he stopped, the student was in tears with her head on her sister's shoulders. There were students, teachers, and spectators and helpers at the judging contests where many students and parents heard him, at least the ones in our area. I told the student she was doing fine and to ignore what was said. We continued to discuss the class of how and why we placed them that way. Mr. Hamel stayed, didn't say much after that point when discussing the class. At the end of the discussion, Mr. Hamel told the students to decide to talk to her, assuming to discuss what he said to her, thinking to apologize, but I'm not sure of that. Students wasn't getting any more upset, so I just watched in the background to make sure he wasn't upsetting her more. He continued judging that morning with no other issues between Mr. Hamel and the students. Mr. Hamel was helping the Woods County Fair that morning by moving the livestock around for most of the classes, while students were judging with no other problems. I based my decision on the inappropriate use of language to a student. We in the education field are held to a higher standard than some other areas of the workforce. To address a student or students in this manner, I feel is most inappropriate. It is unacceptable. We do not, we do appreciate those who want to help and donate their time and money to do so. However, those individuals must understand the ethics and professional standards that are involved with dealing with students. I might point out that this is a person that has donated his time and effort for a number of years. However, this person has never had a background check, to my knowledge. Do you have any knowledge of that? He is not on our insurance, and he's never been brought before the board to be hired as a volunteer. So therefore, we face liabilities on this person because he has not been approved by the board nor on our insurance. It is my job as the chief officer, when I feel that something threatens the educational process or the well-being of our students, to do what I feel is right. That is why I made the decision I made. That's all I have.
Greg.
If we're going unconsciously, I might be at.
You can't do that. This is about you, not, not anybody else.
Okay, well, I'm gonna object due to the fact that I didn't receive a written letter on this. I didn't receive the proper notification. And I actually never filed a paper written appeal for this meeting. So I'm gonna object for the kind of being to do that my lawyer told me to do.
No action.
All right. I guess we'll take no action on item six then. Okay, then, item number seven. Is board to discuss with possible vote to approve, disapprove, or take no action on the gym floor repairs. Presenters will be present to discuss recommendations for repairs. What are the speakers?
We're there.
All right. I know you guys got some questions.
Who's speaker?
Oh, three, four weeks ago.
I don't know which speaker's gonna work.
Okay, just a second.
Okay.
Can you still hear us?
Yes.
That's still a much better speaker. Okay. See if this, we're just moving speakers around so they can hear you better.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. That one's not wrong. Huh? All the way up, is it?
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, right there.
We can't hear you.
Okay, we can barely hear you. Yeah, there's a mic postponed.
Okay.
So, does anybody have any questions up here or ask?
Now, this is, are we talking?
The flooring.
Oh, this is the flooring.
Flooring, yes, this is the flooring. This is Darryl from Forest State, Darryl Patterson.
He was the one that we discussed at our regular meeting.
Do we have a proposal for him?
Yes, we do. And I gave it to you. Is it, do you have that? If not?
I didn't want to have it with me. It was $9,000, $9,200.
I can bring it in here.
No, $9,200?
Yes. $9,200.
We're talking about your bid.
Okay.
And it was $9,200, is that correct?
It was $9,200, right?
Yeah, they sent it out from the office. I'm more than that, okay.
Okay.
When can it be done?
They were wanting to know, when can you do it?
Um, I would have to check with scheduling, but I would say, we should be honest, in the next ten days, two weeks, no problem.
So could you do it about the eighteenth day of October through the twenty-third?
Um, that would definitely be a possibility without a certain down in terms of schedule. I hate to give you an affirmative, but I don't see that probably being an issue.
And the reason we said that date is because that's during fall break, and we have no school?
Wouldn't have shutting.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we wouldn't have to worry about PE class or our P, our basketball practice because they wouldn't be having it during that time period?
That would be a good time to do something there for now.
Well, this is Shane Morris, board president. I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
We've been told in the past, we've been told in the past that that floor is, is no good, that the nail heads are poking through, you know, so I'm, I'm a little concerned. But why, why do you think you can, or how do you, how can you repair it without doing that? I'm curious here, because that's what we've been told, that the floor is completely shot.
This is not an uncommon story of them out there, and they, they just feel like if the floor shot, you know, like twenty years of doing this, I'm always giving one floor that was ever the wear, wear, or the down material. Um, what you're seeing out there right now is a lot of top nails that were put in, in the back, and those nails are coming out. Uh, the floor is, 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 the word happens, and, um, you know, and first by, and there, you know, we won't do, I'm gonna do a hundred and sixty nails coming up in the back. Um, what you're seeing right now, that there, there's a lot of ones throughout the floor, and what those were, those were then overnails. When the guy nailed the floors up, and then set it all the way, and so it's, that's what they did in the office, they said it, you know, provided the board. And that's the first time, you post that, you'll start, when you're standing floors, and so, and some of those can only be a six, seven inch, you know, it could be an eight. But you've still got another solid, I'd say, well, it's forty-sixty to a quarter of what it's last, what it was. I just, I think no evidence that it's, it's clearly been seen through.
Okay. Now, when you, when you're talking about repairing this, are we just talking about the two spots or the, the spots cutting out and replacing the floor there? And then are you?
Yeah. Basically, the line, um, we're gonna say, you know, just about the place they're lying to the wall. Um, it translates that in, it's, it's not as solid. If we're gonna be talking, so, you know, the floor, or if you just look, just taking it all the way, and that way, you can tie the one end, it's solid. And even if you have to nail it back, with nail, with your walls, it's always gonna come, be very foul on your floor. You're not trying to fix it.
Okay. There any other questions?
Did he figure the price on redoing the whole thing?
Oh, did you, did you ever figure a price on, like, refinishing the whole floor after, after you?
Okay, yeah, yeah, refinishing the whole floor. Um, so when I was down there, there's some testing engineers, and several different small, um, in the gym floor, and which is a bad time to do refinishing, everything. Um, it's what you're doing, and you're not.
Hang on. Hey.
Babe.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna, the rest of the rest of the back, you know, over the course, the next four months, after, um, if you get it dried down to where the stuff is gone, we can definitely give you a price.
Hey, can you hear me? Sir?
Yeah.
Start all over. I couldn't hear what you said the first of it.
Um, basically, with, with those, you know, several spots around the floor that are tough, you know, just slightly tough, it's not a good time to do a, you know, a, a first, gonna finish over the whole floor. Reason being that they're gonna pop the highs off, and you're not gonna get a good replacement and a load. So you're gonna run a higher lift, uh, that, you know, I'm not asking to pull that kind of thing. So, um, when I was a kid, I left the stuff that had gone throughout the floor.
So what you are proposing to do is to take the worst spots under the goals, and will that be a safe environment, a safe floor for our kids to play on for this year? And then we, if we have to, we can do something in the summertime, but it will be safe right now.
Yeah, quick, and I just wanted to say, for the kids coming now, I don't see that as being an issue at all.
Now, we were under the impression that this, what you're going to do at this time could last on this floor for a period of time, ten years, fifteen years, is this accurate?
Now, can you say the first part of that again? Sorry about that.
We were told at one point in time that what you are proposing to do right now for this $9,200 would extend the life of this floor for a period of time, whether it be ten years, fifteen years, is that accurate?
That is actually the only thing that would cause any trouble to this floor from here forward, if either moistness, you know, direct water, somebody's gone back and blood attempt, um, because there's, there's plenty of life left in this floor. Um, the maple doesn't really ever get out on the floor. It literally up until it gets, went out very late, that's its one, over the years, that the wear, wear on the maple was gone, and that was it. Um, the soap floor can fail, um, but that usually due to moisture also. So I don't see an issue since life since this year, you know, on this floor whatsoever. I might truly believe that that would be the case.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah. Did he get a price of putting ventilation? Did you get a price of putting ventilation underneath our floor, or is it even possible?
I, yeah, set the floor up, get ventilation underneath it now. You know, basically, that's no run down from that, and, and without that, the whole thing out, that wouldn't be a problem.
But if we do not put ventilation under it, will it just warp again, or will it cause the same problems?
I, I believe that the majority of your problems this time is definitely due to coming from above, and I'm coming from below. Um, you know, just getting sand moving in there right now, to get, you know, if the rest of it is, um, will help that dry out, and that's the place, you know, the areas of damage there is bad. Um, the ventilation, that should help, but, uh, I, I didn't say it would solve your problem.
Is there anything else? Anybody can think of? Nobody has any other questions at all?
Well, I, I think that's it for us right now, so we appreciate your time.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thanks for coming, y'all, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yep. Only other question I guess I have is, has anybody else looked at? I don't have a problem with this bid, but I, has, has anybody else looked at it?
I've called four or five people, but nobody ever showed. They said they would show up, but then no one showed. And I asked who the person who did it before was, because I just, that was the one I didn't want to call. But I never got a name or any information on it.
$9,200 would be considerably cheaper than what the replacement of the floor would be.
And he gave us a discount on that when he did that, because originally, he said, before you even came in here, he gave us, he told me a price, and then he goes, "No, this is for a school. I'm not gonna do that. I'll take and cut the price." He goes, "And I'll furnish the wood that's already been in the, you know, out there in the area." He goes, "Usually when you get brand-new wood, like the maple, you have to put it in that room for at least a month for it to get accustomed to your area before you put it down, because it swells and expands." Wood does when it's put out there. And he goes, "What I'm gonna do is bring mine that's already accustomed, that's already ready to go, that I can use, and put it in their floor." And he goes, "So I can give you a break and cut the price for you."
Can't hear nothing, not clicking. Sorry. So what about the nail heads in the rest of the floor? I mean, are they not? That's my question. I mean, there's not just nail heads sticking up as part of it, is there?
It's pretty well covered, but he said that he could fill in all of those.
Well, that's what I meant. Well, that's when I say refinish, is he gonna refinish the whole?
He's gonna put it, he's gonna re-sink the nails, he's gonna fill it, he's gonna, but he's, he doesn't want to go over and sand it all right now, because it would take so much time. He'd need, be in the summertime, because it takes so much time. And when I talked to Scott and to Darryl Bowe, they say it'll take at least four weeks to take and sand it and get it ready to make it right.
So he said that the, to have ventilation underneath it, we'll have to tear the whole thing out. But what about those squirrel cages that they were talking about that had the hookups, like they funnel it underneath of an existing floor? Did you ever talk to him?
I asked Scott, and Scott said that basically he'd want something underneath of it. He goes, "And if you have any base holes or vents, like on the side of the building," which we walked it, and there was none, he goes, "Then he could attach it and hook it to them." But there is nothing there. There's no holes in the man, whoever built the building didn't put anything for ventilation like that. They just left us spaces for the water to run out. That's all they left on it. They didn't leave any spaces or vents, which should have been done, but I guess it's different architect, different, they all have their own ideas.
Different days.
Yeah.
I would guess that that's fairly close to the original floor, wouldn't you? So, it would enable us to be ready for basketball. We have games the first week of November.
Is this something that we would pay for, or is it would just go on towards our lease purchase deal?
It's pleasure of the board, yeah. We're going to wait for the lease purchase. We have to know exactly what sort of, everything we want, we can do that. But we do have the money and building fund if we do that.
So before we do that, we need to fix the roof, right?
I think that if we can get this finished, I think that we can cover the roof. Didn't he say that he would go up and make some temporary repairs so that it would not leak on the floor?
But, so my question is, would we pay for that out of the building fund, or would we?
Yes. I think we, we could possibly, if we could pay for that out of building fund, he hasn't given us a price on that, has he?
On the cover?
Of the roof, so it would not leak on the floor.
Yeah, he said that was just part of it. He would do it anyhow.
Oh, so that's.
He's not really charging you anything extra. It's all part of it. He was gonna make sure it's covered and sealed, make sure no more rain came through.
So we can get the floor fixed.
So that's the $9,200. Then we can start on our, I have two roofing companies that I called that should be here next week, and waiting for another call from another one.
Oh, the floor guy said that he could?
Yeah, the floor guy said he would go up and action it up, that it would not damage the floor.
Free of charge.
Free of charge, in that addition, in that $9,200.
Well, the guy that was gonna fix the roof and the?
Yeah, he said he would cover it.
He said he would cover it like that. He'd say they could do about thousands worth for the day. He said he could do it.
So we got two of them saying they're willing to help take care of the school.
Sounds good.
Is, is that your recommendation?
My recommendation is to fix the floor.
So?
Over spring break, at a fall break, $9,200.
I guess then, do we have a motion?
No motion.
All right, we'll see. Vote, we'll call.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Board to discuss with possible vote to approve, disapprove, or take no action on roof repairs. Presenters will be present to discuss recommendation for repairs.
And they went today, we had roofers, and I think Mr. Wilson and Mr. Babcock went up with one or two of them. More, because I think it's Moreland Roofing came by, and they gave us a bid today also on it. But they want to just put a patch over the roof, basically cut where the water had been pooled up, cut that out, repair that, and put a cover over it. That's up to you guys to make the decision, but I don't know that, how good that's gonna be, because that's like putting a Band-Aid over a?
I would recommend that we take no action on that tonight, and I have called two roofers next week, and I'm still trying. Heritage Roofing, roofing, which we liked. Um, the gentleman, the older gentleman is no longer with the company, and the younger gentleman said he would go to large shops anymore.
With heritage, really? Okay. And we have two more coming next week, yes?
At least.
Okay.
So I would take no action on the roof at this moment, other than what the floor person can do, so we can get that floor going and have a ballgame.
When the, when we have the other two roofers come up here, could we have a meeting pretty quick after that and get that going?
Yes, should be able to, yes.
Okay. All right. Is everyone okay? We're back in?
Soon as we get some bids in, we can. But as you know, I need to have some sort of a figure, and we do want to go lease purchase, is that correct, on the roof?
Yes.
Yes. So I've talked to Jordan, and I think we'll get that started soon.
The guy, did he have some bids today?
Yes. Do we still have them in there in your office?
It's in there all by.
Oh, that's no problem.
Okay. Here's one for $65,000 from More Roofing out of Moreland. I don't know, is that Paul Gordon?
No, that's Bruce Moore.
That's different.
So we had one of the two that we called wasn't doing.
Not wanting to do commercial works anymore.
If we need one more, you can call Mid-America in Oklahoma City. Who's this?
This is More Roofing.
That's just the gym.